Up to 2004 it was one parcel.
In 97 it was one parcel.
Okay.
By 2004 it's two.
Okay.
I don't know when that happened. This is the first document that's reported that says it happened. So I can't say when it happened, but this is when it was recorded.
Okay.
Then the second document you're looking at is 2005 and he carried, this is how I have to keep up straight. He carried has signed that over to she carried.
Okay.
And so that is the second document associated with this parcel.
And what does this, what does this document tell us? That it's still one parcel, two parcels? No change?
It, it, there's clearly two parcels.
Okay.
There's clearly two parcels.
Okay.
So, and, and she, she indicated to you that there's two different tax notices? There's two parcels though.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
So as near as we can tell that was created in 2004.
Okay.
So there's already two parcels.
There's that.
There's already two parcels.
There is.
Okay.
So what do you need from me? The conclusions?
Draw it all together.
Do they need to do anything about they've already got some parcels?
They do have two parcels. The conclusion is in 97 it was one parcel. It was a grazing, 160 acres. In 2000 it was changed to preservation zone. 160 acres per parcel.
So a terminology change but nothing changed?
The requirements, they dropped the footage.
Okay.
The 320 foot built to a town, a county standard road, they've dropped that after 2002.
As in to what footage?
There's no footage of the grazing.
Zero.
Yeah, on the preservation.
All.
There, at that point there wasn't in 2000. So that's what changed was the footage.
What's the 2001 date on your 2004 document?
One second.
At the top and also signed on January 19th, 2001.
On the 2004 document?
Yes. It was recorded?
Okay, so on the back of there, 17th of January 2001, that's actually a second extra page on yours. This is the original I had to have a book on.
So they need to...
You said 2004, it says 2001.
Right, I'm looking down at the show of Van Wagner when the notary signed it.
That's another three.
That's when her commission expired. Oh, the 19th is when it was signed, yes.
Of 2001?
2001.
Not 2004.
Right.
So there's already two parcels and you don't need to separate it then?
What's that?
It's already done.
So are you looking at the second page?
I'm looking at the first page. You've got 2004 in here.
There's already a review?
2001.
Right, and I'm looking at the second. So it is currently done in 2007.
So I'm gonna ask a dual question between you and Jeff. So we have two parcels here. Were you coming in? I might be confused on what you're asking for versus the two parcels now because I thought I kind of knew. Would you mind explaining that again?
Uh, according to the 32 acre parcel, you still have to have 160 acres to put any type of dwelling on it. And it's only 32 acres.
And so the one parcel's 4.98 or whatever it was.
93.
Yeah, 93.
And then you've got the 35 and then, and so you're specifically asking as far as that 35 to be done with, what again?
Well, we're asking that both of them be changed to RA5.
Could just change both lots to the RA, not do anything with the lots or anything?
Correct, yeah.
Better refresh my memory.
Yeah, change both lots to RA5 so that the 32 acres actually becomes a buildable lot. Cause right now as it stands, that, that piece of property couldn't, couldn't apply for a billion per acre.
So to separate it from the back acreage off the hillside, is that what it is?
No, necessarily, not necessarily because there's not 160 acres with that piece.
Right.
Yeah.
It's only the 35 or 34.
Correct, 32 acres.
Also my two bits with regards to, I think we're really, the question is about if we're gonna pass on the fee or not? Isn't that, that's what we're here tonight to talk about?
Yes.
You know, if the county caused an issue that may seem like it's not really an issue because nothing changed and lots of people got their own zoning rechange to something very similar, they just changed the grazing term. It looks like it's been passed twice. I, I felt that the issue could certainly go forward to planning, but I don't see the town why we would want to waive any kind of fee with regards to the process just because we didn't cure the fee, we didn't cause the problem, we're trying to actually solve the problem. So that would be my two bits with it.
The fee is based on acreage, right? At least that's kind of what I understand.
Yeah, yeah. So you got the fee and then plus acreage?
A base fee and then plus acres.
What's the base fee?
What is it on there? John, do you see that on there?
250 plus 50 per acre.
Yeah, 250 plus 50 per acre.
Plus cost.
Yeah, when I just put in for my zoning change, I, I had to pay 300?
$365 I think is what we paid for our application.
Did you?
Wasn't it? 365?
I can't remember.
365.
It's in Monpar.
Yeah.
For me, if there's some extenuating circumstances, like they really weren't the only ones, that, that could sway it, but if there's the county did it the way they did it and no one got informed about it and transferred twice, I just I'd be comfortable moving forward with the process that I don't feel comfortable about waiving the fee. Or what we really care.
No, it's not, it's not a huge, it's still, it's never a problem, yes.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
It's a lot. That's why I thought when I did mine for 100 bucks.
But is there no way that you would have known that this was happening when you went and changed them? That it was the P160 zone?
Uh, not unless you was looking at zoning. They don't, they don't care if I take my lot and I divide it up into 17 lots and sell them to whoever. They don't care. What comes down to is, and this probably won't come up until we go if it moves forward, is was these lots created legally? And if they was not, it's not a buildable law. It is a lot, it's two separate lots, there's no question about that. That's why these documents are in your packet. Whether it's a buildable law or not is the question. Whether it was done legally. We can't regulate when somebody sells ground to somebody, anybody can do that. You can do that anytime you want. We have parcels in the town that are not buildable lots. But that, that will come up if it goes forward. That was just in your packets, just for information that is, as we work through this, GTA and me and staff, as we work through that, this is what we found. So the question is still, are you willing to waive the fee?
Have we ever done it before?
No.
Our clock comes early, huh?
No, since 2007.
Is that not what you said?
That's what it tells me.
They go hard.
I was reading it.
It's a little hard.
Still gotta go through that hour again. I see your point.
Jeff, that's a tough one.
But, you know, what would be the actual, our actual cost of that?
Well, there's no way to tell because you got sent out the notices, then you got the public hearings and it's a part, it's a process.
Yeah.
Process, but we know how to do it.
The thing if we, if we, if we let it go, which I'd love to do, we set precedents.
Yeah, that's the other thing.
Yeah, because next time you say have we ever done that before, I say yes.
Yeah.
You know, sorry they never got notices, which they probably didn't, but...
Yeah.
Provenal hardship.
See, my property was an RA1 prior to that. Then I went to RA5 because of...
Without really knowing?
Yeah, without knowing. That was, well, Eric knew because I go with meetings, but, yeah, I didn't receive individual ones.
But that, you can't say you didn't know though, because they legally put it in the paper. So they, that's what I'm saying. So you can say, I mean, if you don't do, I mean, I don't look at things, you do. But, so I wouldn't know, but that's what I'm saying. I hear so many people say, well, we didn't get notified. Well, it was in the paper, it was on the planning, it was on all this stuff. So like I said, and so it's hard because they have covered their bases, the county has obviously. It was notified. And it was a huge meeting, if it was that meeting. Huge.
Yeah, and the legal requirements. So if I say I'm not questioning their legal...
Exactly, that's what I mean. So I'm saying...
Of their, of their, people questioned me and I have to deal all that out. So I'm not questioning that at all. So... I just, it's just where we are, so... Whatever you want to do, it's council. Well, whatever three of you want to do.
What's the... What is the frontage now existing?
On the P160?
On the...
Oh, I don't know what your frontage is. I don't know that that's ever been on the map I've seen. I don't know what the frontage is.
How you define that?
County waived it for you.
Yeah, a little bit.
Now, your driveway, that would be hard to quantify because it's a road built the opposite direction. It's a private road from that part forward.
Right.
So yeah, the county waived it out a little bit for them. Yeah, a little bit for what they used to have.
30 to 60.
30 to 60.
So as far as planning, my hands are tied until the council makes a decision.
So you don't feel you dispay in the vote and stuff?
Oh, I think I could, yeah. I'm just telling you as a planner, I can't, as staff, it's planning, I can't do anything.
We have to make a motion one way or the other.
As far as planning, this application is incomplete.
So, but you don't feel like you'll make a motion on this yourself?
I will.
You're looking for one of us?
Yeah. He's come to the council to ask.
I may have some advice for him deciding on which way you guys vote, huh?
I'm just waiting for a motion or something from one way or the other.
So that would be, it's called for the question. Call for the motion.
So I see it as, it, it might be really high, this might not be fair, but it's the rule, alright? I, I guess I'd side with you, Mayor. Sorry, Jeff. But I don't know if we can break the rule, you know, change the rule.
If we would have opposed it, we would have made a mistake, it would be easier to deal with, but it just was totally out of our hands 100% all the way up to this point. Jeff?
I don't have any recourse against the county for them making it. That's why I'm here presenting this to you. And if I could go after the county for making that change, obviously we'd be down a different road, but that has, that has to stem from you, not from the county.
I also have a question.
So I make a motion that we don't accept the...
We don't waive the fee?
We don't waive the fee.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second? Seeing none, motion dies for lack of a second. Is there an alternative motion?
Am I voting on this or am I even, because you're calling for the vote?
I'm calling for the vote, you're going.
Okay, then I'll second it.
Can we state your motion, please?
Yeah, that we deny the request to waive the fee or change the fee or whatever.
Okay.
Second it?
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
How'd you say, I feel bad about it, right? I understand it's a hardship, but the, the code's the code, I guess, in my opinion.
Any discussion? Okay, I call for the vote. Oh, do yours answer?
You know, it reminds me of the, uh, the last Supreme Court justice that was floated in there on the Supreme Court. He commented, well, I'm gonna stand behind what's, what the law is and that, and sometimes I haven't agreed with the law, but that was the law.
So that was a discussion?
I left the...
Okay. All in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Okay. To carry, we will not waive the fee. Jeff, I probably should talk to you a little bit after me, if you got, unless you're out of here. Do you have your mom to recall when you're out here?
Does that conclude planning department?
Isn't that enough?
I always, I always move on and you always bring me back for at least one, so I always just tell each other. Okay, um...
Thank you, Ryan and Kim, for all that work we did.
Yeah. We move forward and sometimes it goes by and you guys work hours and it takes minutes, or it's a lot of work.
Do our job, it'll take minutes. Sometimes it doesn't look that way.
So we have 11 approval of minutes, meeting minutes from October 2nd, 2017. I don't know if anyone has any highlights or want to sort for the chair and attend a motion to approve the minutes.
I've got a couple of things. On page one. Well, maybe I can't bring that up because she's not here.
I thought it'd be by somebody else?
Yeah. So at the bottom, your bottom line, which seems to indicate the law was created when the zoning occurred. I can speak to the second sentence there. I think Ryan would like to straighten it.
Which paragraph are you in, I'm sorry?
I'm on page two, first, second sentence. Says, Ryan Taylor stated a legal lot seems to have been formed. If I didn't know Ryan Taylor, I would say that maybe he said that, but I know Ryan Taylor.
So if I said that, I don't have any, I didn't have any basis to do so. I think what I was trying to say is if a legal lot had been created, then it could be a lot of record. So I think there's an if or a qualifier missing.
If instead of a. If, if a legal lot?
If a legal lot was created, then that's what that would mean. If there wasn't a legal lot created, then it would mean something different.
That would make more sense to me, knowing Ryan Taylor. Um, I, I'm sorry. Uh, page three, I'm down in item five, second paragraph. Stormhaven needs to have the speed limit sign replaced with, which was removed during the Daniel Irrigation Company construction in the spring. Those signs are actually, have been replaced, they're up there.
There is a missing dead end sign that came down as part of our project, but I think it's, I think the amount of time tracking down and having somebody else do it will outweigh the cost of just putting the sign back up. We'll look at it.
Alright. And then on page four. Oh, can't wait. One of the property owners in the three farm subdivision installed a one and a quarter setter for the five inch meter rather than a one inch. Mr. Taylor feels an adapter can be installed to make the proper connection for the three homes involved. The math doesn't add up.
Okay. Since my name's in there, can I offer a suggestion?
Absolutely.
Which track and what do we add?
I believe the five should be a three quarter inch meter. So the meters we're trying to install, three farms are a three quarter inch meter. And I do believe that an adapter from one, one or one and a quarter to three quarter could be done.
We do have a different rate plan for five inch meters.
You could argue we could do a five inch meter. I've never personally done one of those.
So you're changing five inch to three quarter inch and the rest is?
The rest I think stays the same. I think the five inch should be two quarter inch.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Any last discussions on the minutes? None? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes approved.
Do you need this then?
Yeah, I thought it was super.
Okay, home occupation, we're moving on to item number 12, home occupation code E125 amendment discussion.
Yeah. Finally we get to do something.
So I had, I had a couple of, uh, things that I needed to do because I remember we got down to zero, or O. And we had accomplished K, L, M, and N. Or at least got wording in there that we're gonna pass back to planning. I did get some information back from council with regards to short-term rentals. And then also the verbiage in the, in the letter does not necessarily go hotels, bed and breakfast, and reception centers. That wasn't a part of the discussion that we had, we needed clarity on. Council, I'll just read the first couple of paragraphs and then kind of tell us where we stand. Under current Utah law, cities and towns in Utah can and do prohibit, restrict, or otherwise regulate short-term rentals, and many have chosen to do so. In the last legislative session, a bill was introduced, HB 253, which caused a lot of confusion in this area. Originally HB 253 was introduced with language which would have prohibited municipalities from adopting any prohibition of short-term rentals. This language was altered during the legislative session and the final language that's actually passed only prohibits municipalities from adopting an ordinance which prohibits or penalizes the listing of short-term rentals on a website. And so it's pretty clear that we can keep that in our code. There's something else in that paragraph that we didn't get to bring up, but Eric had brought up last time, also with being, home occupations having to pay for their business licenses. That I still have to wait for, that's still very muddy watered as well. So he could not give me a clarification on that. But as far as the short-term rentals, motels and things, I would like to keep that in that wording, that there will not be any short-term rentals, motels, bed and breakfast, and reception centers are not allowed. So that would be my clarification, what I was needed to do to come back and answer to council on. What other...
What's, what's your feelings on why you don't want to allow them?
Short-term rentals?
Bed and breakfast?
Airbnb right now is a huge moneymaker, but it could also be something good for the town.
You know, I have to say that probably, I can't say 100%, I'd just say incredibly high percentage of both people that I know either have done it and or have read. I've been warned as a mayor, as a town, for people don't even let it even squeak into your town. There have been, I mean, you've got the best stories and the worst stories. I, I personally will not even entertain the horror stories that come to the towns that I've heard and read. We don't have second, we don't have structures on our homes to have second occupancies in, in homes. I just don't see that.
But what if, I mean, somebody has a, how many, how many homes in Daniels are used as a second business? I guess you should answer that. Are there people that are retired and go to Arizona when it snows?
Well, I'm sure they have a house here on, on the one lot, one house in Arizona.
So if they wanted to rent it to a family for a month because they didn't want to stay in Park City, would be a benefit to the town as far as taxes?
You know, it may or may not be. I just know the short-term rentals, that everything I have delved into in quite a bit, whether it's small, it is a nightmare for towns. It's a safe, I mean, it's just, it brings a lot of problems that people have, don't anticipate or may not think that might come with it. I mean, I don't know how many stories you want me to tell you that I read, that, you know, people that, once you lease that, it's not yours. They can trash whatever they want to trash, you can't do. You can call the cops and they sit outside until that click time clicks and then you go in and you see your house destroyed or you see what illicit problems we're having. And I just don't think the town wants to take on that kind of responsibility of dealing with that because we're already trying to enforce just a few things that are kind of difficult to even enforce. That'd be my logic.
But what you just explained is not a short-term rental. Monthly rental is not a short-term rental.
Two weeks, somebody comes, somebody comes on for vacation.
That's when you start having the problems. The, the mayor's indicating. When you get the short-term rental, three nights, they're in partying. Mr. Schindlerling has to go over with his on six and threaten them.
So that's a major change from your current code?
Nope. We just clarified that we can control and get it because the state did issues and things that were confusing, so that's why I got clarification. Most, almost every municipality does control it and doesn't allow it.
In your current code, you state that a bed and breakfast can be attained if the property owner stays on the property?
There are, there are other parts in our code that would address that. We're talking about the secondary business in this particular line item.
Okay. So is that contradicting or confusing?
Well...
Yes.
There's another area that would be able to talk to, home, bed and breakfast, right Eric?
Yes, there is. We actually have a whole different code that, that states that very thing, short-term rentals are not allowed. It's short, it's sweet, it's to the point.
And that's just another version of it.
Wouldn't it be better to exclude the bed and breakfast off of this one because it make, this one makes it sound like bed and breakfast aren't allowed?
Well, but this is in a, this is in a home occupation setting.
So if somebody has...
You have to have a, a building in a commercial location in order to have a bed and breakfast? Is that how you're doing that?
No, it's a conditional use. In certain zones in the town, you can have a bed and breakfast.
Okay.
So we've had several homes in the, in the town that has applied to be a bed and breakfast. The first thing that happened is you have to get the health department to sign off.
Correct.
Almost none of these homes have fire suppression systems that are up to the commercial rate, the, a bed and breakfast that the county requires. Now granted, the county in this county, Wasatch County, we have higher standards than the state. They ran the public hearing, they adopted higher standards than what the state requirement is.
Good.
So we have a higher bar to clear.
And you have to have full sprinklers in order to have a bed and breakfast?
There is a, there is a fire suppression requirement that happens at the county level that has prohibited bed and breakfasts in the town of Daniels so far.
And it, and not to put more birds under a saddle, but many folks have told me the last thing they want to do is live to somebody that's got a place that people are coming and going every weekend, not knowing who owns it there and, and you know, maybe they got kids, maybe their kids are crossing into the handle. It's just, there's so many things. And so I, I know it's a fault that might be advantageous and could be a moneymaker for some folks, but generally speaking, once again, that residents do not want a bunch of strangers in there next to them.
I, the only reason I ask is I do a lot of work in Park City and maintenance I do on Airbnbs and there's a property in Wasatch, yeah, well, in Hebrew that is trying to go to an Airbnb. And when I sat down and met with them on a maintenance level, I was surprised at how much money they bring in in Park City on Airbnb. That's reasonable.
Sure it's a lot.
They also have their own police force.
We actually do, Wasatch County does a pretty good job of this.
But they're not our own.
And they make it out there about once every six months.
So if you think about it, we get a percentage of sales.
But if we pass an ordinance, we could do that. We don't have a ordinance on there.
So right now...
We would get a portion back through the state.
Of sales taxes.
Right.
So, so if someone were to rent their home for 100 bucks and all that, sales tax is what, 6%? And we get a percentage of that. So the amount that we actually get back is small.
Actually, it's higher, but it's at the county level. It's on the county level. Yeah. And it's a, it's a transient room tax is what they call it, and that goes to the county level, and it disperses county. So the tax benefit is, is not a call at all. So enforcement would eat it up before. We, we could certainly set fees high enough to make money if that was something that one, that town wanted to do, but...
Well, so we can finish up the code as it is before you get sent back to planning. Well, so we can finish up the code as it is before we get sent back to planning. That would be my version of the language on, oh, with council. Is it comfortable, wanna change that? Do you feel that's the last item that we have to deal with before we send it back to planning?
I like how it is. But I have questions on a couple others. Maybe just clarification.
You got it.
If we, if we look at, uh, if we look at N.
N as Nancy?
Yeah. So shipping, transport, transit, accepts, owner, operator, cap of three combinations. Does that mean, what does that mean? Does that mean you can have like three trucks and tra, three trailers? Or does that mean you can have like one truck and two trailers? What does that mean? Cap of three combinations.
Combination is a truck and trailer.
Yeah, we went to this discussion credit last time, I think.
That's trucker talk. Yeah.
That, that, three tractor-trailers.
So you can have three tractor-trailers?
That's a big truck and trailer.
What's that?
That would be truck and trailer is a combination.
Truck and trailer is a combination?
Yes. So that's one combination?
Yeah.
But we did specify self-operated, correct?
Yes.
So that limits it from other people storing it on a said property. You're limiting employees coming in. You would not, of course. And that's what I wrote down. Self-operated. You know, total five, two hidden and three outside.
Oh, really?
So this, you can't hear it either? Put those open jack brakes.
Do we ever, uh, do we ever agree on the five and the three?
Sometimes that's a good thing.
Yeah, so a total of five, three can be.
So what are you?
It's self-operated, so you can't have employees coming in and out driving these three tractors.
All of a sudden, the whole point is it's self-operated.
Oh, I thought you said.
He's the back of the large.
Yeah, so this, this is.
That's what Eric kills me over.
Go fast. So this is, this is where I had the other question. And my question is, what, what does visible?
Visible.
And I'm right here like, like this to her.
Then we ought to say visible from the road.
Get the word.
Well, our discussion back was visible with, if you're a neighbor and it's your backyard, if you're a neighbor on the side yard, it's invisible. I mean, if it's bugging you and you live behind it, it's not the front, it's visible. So the whole point was to hide it from front, back, and sides or sides.
Maybe visible from all property boundaries then? I, I just wonder how you have a backhoe that you can't see?
Our garage is visible. Visible to you in the garage, but not visible to the, to anybody. Visible, the word in.
I'm not sure, maybe this visual all property boundaries or.
Visible from the front, road. Visible from any direction?
Storm outside.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what, how we. Yeah, and then I'm not saying it just.
Well, we just have people that are playing for backyard stuff, where my mind is going with that, just so. People in the back, or some people.
We mad at them now, we mad people buy property, and they build clear in the back to be back there, and suddenly, their front yard is looking at the backyard of everybody else's, and they don't like it. Yeah. I don't like your dog out here, back here, it's my front yard. Okay. No dude.
Okay, so let's wrap up K and visual what?
I don't know. It's already been wrapped up, in my opinion.
You got some, some places on the visual, so just some of the visual, visual from, uh.
Charleston. We had it, we had it, I thought. Visual from any property.
And that's kinda what he's just trying to clarify.
But we don't say that.
Just put visual from any direction.
Building is not visible.
What's that?
If it's inside of a closed building, it's not visible.
That's true, I walk in the building and it's visible.
Oh my gosh, you're an idiot. It's, it's, it's not visible by the, by the.
Wow, sorry.
It's not, no, I can, I can see the point, if it's inside, if, if they have a parked garage and they've got a Mini-X in the garage, it's not visible unless you're invited on the property to look at.
And, and the meant, what was meant by that is by other people, that, that's the point. So I, I kinda clarify here. So hopefully we can clear that up in any direction, visual in any direction.
Yeah, from, from any point of property, if I've got a Mini-X in my backyard and Raymonds don't like it.
You can see it from his backyard.
But if, but if he has a tractor in his garage and I go, man, that's ugly.
Whatever in your garage.
Let's quantify it, let's, let's define it a little more.
Visible is if you drive by my house and you can see it.
Visual from any direction. Does that work?
What, what was that?
I don't really care what. Visual from any direction.
From any direction.
What about Google Earth? I mean, we had someone complain about that, seriously.
You know, I'm sure there probably is, and they probably hate to look at Google Earth and see a house, it's just stuff by them.
I mean, if you, if you, if you took a shot of somebody's house and could see it off of Google Earth, and you complained, and somebody complained to the council, is the council gonna take it as a complaint and revoke their business license because it seemed from Google Earth?
That's part of the most extreme, and I couldn't imagine that happened, that I can see never, yeah. I mean, you know, we're, we're gonna deal with the complaint. And if that complaint is a real valid complaint, then we're gonna have to deal with it. If it's just a.
I think on that, the visual part of it, it just needs to be, you can physically see it without opening your door.
See, I'm fine with that. Say that.
No, that's fine, and that's what I'm saying is put it in there as visible is.
I'm sorry, I'm an idiot, but it's different, Mark, to me.
Okay, so, so from any direction, does that work, or do we?
Any, any direction as long as, I mean.
From any direction?
From any direction, but if it's inside of a garage, that is not visible.
I, I would agree, I could, I wouldn't be able to see it inside a garage.
Yeah, you, if, if you're looking at my garage, I could have four Mini-Xs in there.
We don't hear what's in your garage. What's sitting outside of the garage?
Yes.
And there's only three.
So K would, K would get taken care of, it'd satisfy visual from any direction.
Yes, only three stored outdoors, that's. Stored outdoors. Outdoors and.
Which one?
How would he get in there?
That it's.
From, from frontage? Visible from the frontage?
A guy parks up and out behind his barn, I think he's done his due diligence, died it.
I agree.
So how does that tie into the three and the five?
Well, you can have five pieces of equipment, including tractor-trailers, on your property, but on three can be stored outside.
That part I got.
So if you put all three behind there, none's visible. But you can only have five.
So the three that we're discussing is the three that are allowed, and we're saying not from the front. That's all we're trying to find, is the three that, the other two obviously can't be seen.
Right.
So the three that can be seen, is we're saying just, we're gonna say bump in the front.
Frontage.
Yeah, because we can get an airplane.
The, the, the problem with frontage is, what if somebody doesn't, somebody's on a corner lot?
Our code speaks to corner lots as treated as two frontages.
Okay, so front side and side, if there's no building, no fence, front, those aren't. Okay.
In a battle party on a corner lot.
On the front.
But I, I just think the frontage is, I think of a guy's gonna park his stuff out behind the lawn, which is penalizing.
Well, no, but if he parks on the side of his house, it doesn't have anything, and you see this big row of stuff all the way down. I don't, did I go back to three? I keep thinking of all the other equipment that aren't three yet.
Yeah.
Um, there's still more than five, but.
And another reason for frontage is when I go out there, it's easy for me to verify.
Okay, you can't be walking on a property.
Yeah, I don't have to go out back.
True, true. Okay. Council's at there, they're finding. Council's everyone finding changing it from, uh, visual from any direction to visually from front, from frontage?
Frontage.
Done?
Yeah, whatever.
Anything to clarify?
I think that helps.
Okay. Sorry, Lydia, you take the.
Well, but when I go and bring somebody in, we gotta decide right here.
To me, that makes sense. Okay, so frontage is, we went back, we went to frontage, Eric.
Okay.
That took care of the K, L, M, N, and O. Or, or, are we wrapped up? Oh, the A, the dash A. And why can't we have amendment? We can't, we just have the A.
Pass up all of the A's. The way I did it, it seems to make sense to me. The amendment follows right after the home occupation. Just pick up with eight point two five oh seven. You end with oh six.
Did I say that? I did say that.
You did.
I did say that. So it's in eight point, eight point two six?
It ended with eight point two five point oh six, so this one begins with oh seven.
So just the bottom, the last number changes.
Eight two five oh seven. It goes, your sections on the first page will be oh seven through the two.
Eight two five oh seven.
Yeah, it goes at oh seven.
I distinctly remember telling you to do it.
Okay. Okay, so at this point, my understanding is now that we've finished this, we've finished our initial of eight point two fives.
I know I'm late for the party, but on the medical, dental, and insurance business, is there a reason to exclude that? Because there are a lot of people that sell Aflac and insurances from their home. Somebody wants to be a medical billing specialist, I know a lot of gals, my wife is thinking of it right now, of just doing medical billing, and that would make it illegal. She couldn't do that from home?
I can do that. Go and take it, okay. This is for a home business. We have home occupation that that falls under that has no impact to the town.
Okay.
That's eight twenty-five. This is amendment A for a home business, that's a home occupation, so it's different.
So bottom line, what you asked for, on that section, everything's green light.
Okay, I just, I mean, that, that is good, no, I mean, the difference between a home business and a home occupation.
Right.
She could be, I mean, people do business selling insurance from their home.
Right.
So that would be an, that would be an occupation.
Massage therapist, hairdos, you know, downstairs, those are, you don't want. Where?
Full answer. Hold on, we gotta do something.
They didn't say it was a, they didn't honestly, that was not allowed. Oh, except they did say that any business is allowed to stay in.
I think we made it through it, I think.
No, it's now going to.
Will it still be in the A? Or are you gonna give rid of amendment?
If you don't, I mean, it is a separate, separate section.
It's almost surreal. I don't believe we got.
Somebody's scared to make a motion.
I make a motion that we accept eight point two five point oh seven amendment A for the home occupation.
Okay.
I would ask that he amend his, his motion to send us to the planning commission for review.
I make a motion to send this to the planning commission for review for the eight point five. Oh, seven, eight point two five point oh seven amendment A. Amendment to be sent to the planning commission for final.
Okay. You have a motion to send eight point two five onto planning? Do we have a second? Second. First and second, any last discussion on this? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Nay. I'm sure I was.
What a relief. Thirteen months later, reading. It's got to this point. Well, a year, someone said nine months ago, about four months ago, so I just kinda chuck it up the months. Mark, how many months?
You were right, well, thirteen, in my opinion.
Really?
I've got it back to August.
So we have the original or the latest version for the planning commission? Can we get a copy of that, Eric? The latest copy?
I think she was gonna put it on. Review the old draft.
Well, we will, but at least.
We're starting with a blank paper, we're gonna read through the.
Let's reinvent the wheel.
And thank you for everyone that put up with this for a year. It's been a, a very good, bad, excellent learning experience.
It may not be good.
Um, I will move on to item thirteen, recorded office warrant approval announcements. Uh, first consideration of meeting scheduled for two thousand and eighteen. And so I'll turn the time over to Lynn.
Hey, love up, tomorrow's there in front of you. The town Daniel reversed myself with phone and postage. Charge on the card from Eric for having supplies with the stakehold. Chris submitted an invoice. Chris Anderson for the I.C. work available for the first four months of the year. Have you noticed in the Wasatch way? But you'll know what she means as.
Stonecutter?
Yeah.
Yeah, speaking of Chris, the computer, he says you have to eliminate all the stonecutter ones. But that's where your thing is kicking out. You did?
From behind you.
Right, and that's what he's saying, don't send it to the stonecutter account. It has to go to the town email. And so Eric, look through it, Daniel.
I said all three, but as long as you get it, the town's, it's against your work, it knows you're.
Yeah, well, I don't know if I am.
Right, exactly. Until I ask you about it.
Right. And so what I've been doing is if I get it, I usually just write back, okay.
Sorry, Lynn.
That was a computer thing, so, yeah.
Uh, down at the Flores Methods, this is Kathy Jo and I did go to their confidence. Sherry wasn't able to make it, so that was a seventy-five dollars per person. Thirty-eight dollars that has been paid. Smith Hart Dixon's monthly invoice for a thousand and eighty-four.
Okay, and so do we, what was that for? Do we know?
For.
For all the stuff that Chip's been talking to you.
Just miscellaneous?
About.
So the eight twenty-five and?
Yes.
Well, and, and, you know, I, I, let's say the last couple of months, we had a, what, two thousand, maybe last month, and the seventeen, and between the school issues and, and the other issues.
I was in the code in the school.
I'm surprised how low it actually is.
Okay, moving on.
Not that I'm trying to buffalo or anybody, but Lynn and I both mentioned like, did he really get it? But he seems that he's, he's not counting the seconds, let's put it that way.
Okay.
And the GDA engineers invoices itemized there. Including one under public works for the roads. Including one under public works for the roads, Eric's who stakes ours and the payroll. Mr. Batlin will be eliminated on that one as well. On Daniel, water, utilities, GDA. I was thinking today on our Polaris software of I should have them create a water sampling item instead of having it all under engineering. So we know.
Yeah, that would probably be good to break that out. It's not really engineering. It's.
Right.
It's similar but different.
A service that you've provided, but it can be itemized better. So I'll see if they can do that. And then it comes to this Kirk Neary's construction. I'm a little sweetened. The Baird residence. I'm still waiting till it rains. I'm not sure if the town is supposed to pay this or if the resident is supposed to pay this. Ryan on the Kirk Neary's.
Does the town pay that?
For the Baird residence. Is he responsible for that and not the town? Because Gary gave me the invoice and said the town has to pay this.
I believe we should pay it and then.
We hired him.
We hired him. We should pay it, but then we can get reimbursed.
But in other circumstances, the resident will hire the plumber.
They have that offer. This one chose not to do that.
Okay. So you will get reimbursed?
So we'll need to get reimbursed.
Okay.
Yeah, we was under the gun on that. This guy could come.
This is all.
One of the new houses didn't install their own meter, so the town did it. But we hired them. We need to pay it, but then we need to get reimbursed.
And then the payroll. Smirk Haven, utilities, GDA, water testing. And Mike Duggan provided some backhoes for, I think it was on Baird and the plumb across the highway.
At least two different projects.
I don't think he was involved on the Baird.
Well, there were a difficult hole with another rig somewhere.
Probably, yeah, there was a.
The backhoe was up there for three, four days.
Yeah. Do you know what happened there?
Yeah, I think there was an improper asshole.
What was it?
So they dug it, you know, it was leaking pretty good. They dug it up, we stopped. And I think what happened is the pipe flexed at the coupling. So when they backfilled it, it flexed and leaked. And when they, you know, dug it up, it stopped. And so they've got it bedded in gravel now and bedded a lot better than they backfilled it.
And no water seepage, so they can see.
As we can tell, it's fixed.
Okay. Did, did we do that or did, I know they were talking about Adam.
We did that.
We did that. Okay.
Yeah, so Mike's backhoe came and Mike dug it up and the gravel came from my driveway.
Okay. The last I talked to the.
You got a thick driveway, y'all.
Got a little less gravel on it now.
We know what hours he works.
Okay, Lynn, I'm sorry. Can we keep interrupting you?
Well, that was, the reason I asked that was because we had, last I talked to the water company, that might have been a warranty issue, but it sounds like. They were talking about that and about a warranty issue on that, but clearly.
Okay, um, challenge on time, motion with regards to the warrants.
Motion approved.
Motion approved.
I'll start out that one.
You want me to?
Yeah.
Okay, we need to.
We have a second and now we have discussion.
Okay, we need to remove seventy-five dollars for Matthew remodel. That is a, that is an owner using our services. That will be totally out of their pocket with the town. So the seventy-five dollars needs to be backed out of the two thousand three hundred eighty-two fifty, if you'll amend your motion as such.
Yeah, sure, but help me understand. So the Matthews guys are going to pay that?
Yes, they're using our inspector.
So they're doing something that we don't want to permit. I said we want to inspect it anyway, so they hired our inspector. But I think it would, Eric's right. I think it'd be cleaner to just have them pay the inspector and not run. The alternative is you can pay it and then they can pay you. And I think it's just cleaner if we just cut one of the no man out. We already got enough of them.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
So I'm going to take a new motion with the.
Less, less. Yeah. Motion stands, whatever.
Circumstance.
Is there a first and a second? Motion, any last discussion? If not, any opposed? Warrants approved.
You have the preliminary twenty eighteen meeting scheduled. So if you will just review those dates. We can have the ordinance to pass next month unless you want to change something.
Yes.
January first is on a Monday, so that meeting is moved to the eighth. And as always, the September meeting will be the second Monday.
He didn't turn the clock back. I'm freaking out.
Three seconds. I like it.
So you run the date by planning as well?
Yes. Okay, so as far as the council's concerned, I'll take a motion with regards to calendar meeting schedule.
You don't want to make a motion.
Okay. At one time, at some point we have to, right?
Yes, they, it passes by ordinance.
Okay, there you go. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I ask one favor?
You got it, Mark.
I'd like to stand up here and publicly express my sincere apology for calling you an idiot, John. I was out of line. And I apologize to everybody in the room for that. I'm sorry I did it. Hope we can all see past that. Appreciate all the time that you guys have put into making this city council what it is and the city what it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay.
I'd like to motion to adjourn to my meeting.
Second. Yes, you have a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody, especially those who suffered through this last year of COVID.